Good evening. If we could have everyone take their seat, please. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 28th, City of Tuscaloosa zoning board of adjustment meeting. I'd like to start by making introductions. My name is Rob Stewart. I serve as the chairman of the board, and I will start on my left and have my board members introduce themselves.
Tim Gilliam.
Michelle Coley, vice chair.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Linda Ford.
And I would like at this time to recognize Tuscaloosa city staff who's in attendance, starting with Ms. Emily Hayes, associate director of planning. Mr. Jonathan Bowen, planner, from the office of city attorney, Ms. Kim King, associate city attorney, and from the, we don't have anyone from engineering tonight, is that right? And in the back, we've got Mr. Kevin Jones, he is running our video and audio production. The Board of Adjustment does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the board have the authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. By virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows: to hear appeals and decisions of the zoning officer of the city, to grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council, and to grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions a literal enforcement of the code would result in an unnecessary hardship. No one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship, but all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the property in question is unique in that it cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of the limitations imposed upon it by reason of its classification in a specified zone. A working definition of an unnecessary hardship is as follows: the property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classification. It must be a unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. It must relate to the property and not any personal issues. This includes economic, financial gain or loss. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of a kind that is common to all of the property owners in the area. Circumstances that are not considered hardships: self-inflicted or self-created, inconvenience or personal. The zoning board of adjustment, by virtue of state law in the City of Tuscaloosa ordinance does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or homeowners association rules or regulations. These matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. This is a public hearing. It's being recorded, videotaped, and streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as on local cable TV. Proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. There are sign-up sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition, and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and address the board. All comments should be directed to the board, and no questions or comments are to be directed to directly to city staff. I would ask city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket of petitions now before the board have been made in accordance with the law.
It has.
Thank you. The following procedure will be followed for each petition. This is a hearing, excuse me, this hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. City staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the board concerning the same. The petitioner or the petitioner's designated agent will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the board. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. The four members of the public that are in support of the petition and four members of the public that are in opposition to the petition who signed up to speak will then be afforded an opportunity to make inquiries and comments. At the close of public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to the comments if necessary. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. The chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to any new issues raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. At the close of public comment or once the board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on a petition, the chairman will close further comment or discussion, and the board will then discuss the matter. The chair will read into the record the motion to approve the request, along with any conditions set by the board, and the board members will commence voting. Four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of the board. Please leave signs if you're a petitioner present that are notifying the meeting, notifying the public of the meeting in your yard. The city staff will be by to remove those as soon as possible. Any party aggrieved by any final judgment or decision of such Board of zoning adjustment made within 15 days thereafter appeal therem from to the circuit court by filing such, by filing with such board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. The board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the board members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda? No.
Okay, we'll get started. So with our cases withdrawn by staff, ZBA 6623 and ZBA 9023. Moving into our cases to be heard, starting with ZBA 8223, Joy and Enos Tombura petition for a variance from the residential setback regulations to allow the construction of an addition on the property located at 50934th Avenue, zoned R3, Council District 1. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. So view of the front of the house, and the rear of the house. Applicable regulation, section 24-35 yards unusual open space requires an aggregate side yard width of 14 with the least width of either yard being five feet. The petitioner is requesting to remove a portion of the existing house and construct an additional garage and deck. The current petition is identical to the petition that was submitted and approved in July of last year. However, the owners did not obtain a City of Tuscaloosa business license, or a City of Tuscaloosa building permit, excuse me, within six months of that approval, so unfortunately the approval did expire. The home was constructed in the 50s, and therefore it does predate the zoning ordinance, so it is considered non-conforming, just like many houses within the surrounding area that don't conform with these R3 standards. The proposed deck will sit approximately two feet and one and a quarter inch from the southern property line, and in addition, they want to add a laundry room and garage to the northeastern portion of the home, and that will sit approximately five feet four and three quarters inch from the property line. Do you have any questions for staff?
Ms. Hayes, just to clarify, this case, same petition, same owner, came before the board last summer.
Yes.
And the only reason they're coming back is because they didn't pull a permit within six months.
Correct. And I'll go into, I also have the plans that were originally submitted, so we can just go through those again. So this is a current site plan, a current plan of exactly what the house as it sits today looks like. This is what that addition, where exactly those additions are going to be. The deck is that southern part of this, and then the northern part is where you can see where the garage is going to be added. So this is the existing first floor and proposed, so you can see where that portion of the house is going to be removed and replaced here and here. And this is the existing and proposed second floor, so you can just kind of see a little bit higher up exactly what that's going to look like with that open deck. And then here's some elevations as well. This is all exactly the same as what was presented in July of last year. Nothing has changed about it.
Okay, if we could have the petitioner come forward.
I'm here representing Joy. I'm both the architect that did the drawings.
Wait till you get to the mic. Get to come to the mic.
I'm Elizabeth Alter. I'm an architect that did the drawings for Joy, and she's out of town, and I'm here representing her as both architect and a friend.
Ms. Alter, if you could give us your address, please.
My address?
Yes.
16B as in boy, Country Club Hills, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35401.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything to add?
No, she's just having issues getting bids. That's the reason it expired. She's eager to move forward and is trying to get some estimates and bids and just coming up against labor shortages.
Just, if you could, if this is approved tonight, if you would forward back to the petitioner, the issues she faced from a year ago, obviously the six months, now the hurdles with workforce and lining it up, that still applies?
Yep.
If she's not met the six months, unfortunately, she would have to come back.
Yeah, she's well aware, and she's as eager as anyone to get it done and move in. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have anyone currently signed up to speak either for or against, so it's, podium is open if anyone would like to come forward to speak. No? Okay, in that case, we're going to close public comment and go to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I see no issue. Maybe it was approved six months ago, small lot, can see where this is a request needed.
I'm in agreement. I don't see anything different that was before we approved it before, so I'm in agreement with approving it again.
Yeah, the board, as was stated earlier, approved this in the summer of 2022. The hardship in this case, and I think Ms. Hayes touched on that, these homes were platted well before, several decades prior to zoning being established in 1971. That being the case, most, all of the homes, I believe, on this street in particular, don't meet R3 zoning in width. They're considerably, lots are considerably more narrow and smaller than what's required for R3. So the hardship is inherent that they can't, based on zoning at all, fit. You couldn't build the house back today strictly to those guidelines. So that serves as the hardship. I think they're making an improvement. When I read through the application, they're providing off-street parking, which is much needed in that area, which is a plus, obviously investing in the home and creating increased value, which will help the neighborhood. So I'm in favor of granting the variance.
I agree with all the board members, I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor. I remember when we had it last year, and our, one of our concerns was the parking, but that was satisfied, and again, the property is not functional the way it is from the 1971, 72 ordinance when it changed. So I'm in.
There are no other board comments. We'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. ZBA-82-23, Joy and Enos Tombura petition for a variance from the residential setback regulations to allow the construction of an addition on the property located at 50934th Avenue, zoned R3, in Council District 1, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to our next case, ZBA 8323, Leah Alexander petitions for a variance from the mixed residential district regulations regarding building height for accessory structures on the properties located at 407, 409, 411, and 413, 30th Avenue East, zoned RD2, Council District 5. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. This is over in Alberta, and then a closer aerial view. These are the houses that were previously approved just a few months ago. I just wanted y'all to be able to see an example of what is there rather than just looking at a vacant lot. So they have successfully built four dwellings, the two single-story dwellings in the front and then the accessory dwellings in the back. The applicable regulation, section 24335H1, states that no accessory structure may exceed the height of the tallest principal structure on the site. Petitioner is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a detached dwelling that will exceed the height of the principal structure. This application is the second phase of construction for these dwellings, and the request is for the construction of the next four accessory dwellings. Accessory dwelling units are permitted in all RD2 properties. However, per the petitioner, 450 square feet is not functional for a dwelling unit. Principal structure will be a single-story home, like what was just pictured, while the accessory structure will be two stories, and that will allow for a more functional living quarters. A similar set of plans was approved, obviously, in March of this year, and that's what you saw in those pictures. So this is the proposed site plans for 407 and 409, as well as for 411 and 413. This is the schematics for the main house, and then the elevations for that accessory structure. Do you have any questions for staff?
Is RD2 the only zoning classification that allows for detached, separate dwelling?
It does.
Okay, and is this, what was approved back in March for the petitioner, was that the only one that's in existence today?
That's correct. We don't have any others in the city that are built in this way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening. I'm Leah Alexander with Alexander Architecture, 5520, 10th Court East, Northport, Alabama. As Ms. Hayes told you, we were here before you last March of 2023 with the same product that was built recently. We would like to, my client would like to build four additional house structures and four additional accessory structures, bringing to you a workforce housing product for the Alberta area that complements the neighborhood residential properties that are across the street. Do you have any additional questions that you have for me tonight?
Are the ones that were built prior, are they occupied now?
Yes, to my knowledge, they are all occupied except for one possibly, and he might have rented that one since the last time I spoke with him, but he's had good success in renting those.
Okay, thank you.
Can you go back to the picture, please, where you show the actual, I think, go back? I was wondering about the paving, where the cars are parked. So that parking right there.
In the site, that is the construction site that is immediately north, and that's going to be one of the sites that we'll be building on. Emily, if you could find one of the site plans for the new properties, let's see. Okay, if you see the drive that goes in between the house and the accessory structure, the house has a park behind, and then the accessory structure has a garage on the main level.
And so there'll be a street that's kind of paved in between?
Yes, there is a paved street between each pod to the left and the right, and we're looking to build two, if you call for a pod, two pods immediately to the north of the ones that are currently built.
I know city staff shared they actually had the opportunity to tour and were very impressed with them. I haven't seen them finished, but I think, being that this is fairly innovative in the city, it's the only zoning that allows it, and I think, to your point, it's trying to fill, attempting to fill the void with workforce housing. Any other questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have anyone signed up either for or against. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward at this point to speak? Okay, there's no takers, so we're going to close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
Oh, I see no issue with this variance. It's a very nice product. I've seen it from the outside. I'm in agreeance.
I agree as well. It's an opportunity for some workforce housing, and 450 feet, you know, it's not enough to live in, you know? Tiny houses are nice, but they need a little bit more space, so I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. This is a variance request, so as far as hardship, similar to what was approved back in March of 2023 for the first four lots. The petitioner had been before the board, continued and came back trying to fit in in this zoning. They did that, they were able to fit their design for the accessory, detached dwelling in the rear, but because of that and being able to stay within the 450 square feet and to allow the appropriate parking, they had to go up, and that's really where the variance is. And I think in order to meet the city's intentions in the ordinance to allow this new type of, you know, secondary dwelling on a, on a single parcel, this is a way to accomplish both of those. So I think it was a good compromise initially. Sounds like it's been successful in the marketplace, so it looks like they're going forward as was their original plan, so I'm in favor of granting the variance.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I'm also in favor.
There's no further board discussion. We'll move to a reading of the petition and vote. ZBA-83-23, Leah Alexander petitions for a variance from the mixed residential district regulations regarding building height for accessory structures on the properties located at 407, 409, 411, and 413, 30th Avenue East, zoned RD2, in Council District 5, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Petition passed.
Moving into our next case, ZBA 8423, Stephen Green petitions for a variance from the occupancy regulations on the property located at 20 Skyline Drive, zoned R1, Council District 7. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view. So view of the house. Applicable regulation, section 2443, residential occupancy restrictions restricts no more than three unrelated individuals unless another specified zoning district, and this one does not fall in that, so it is subject to the three unrelated. Petitioner is requesting a variance from the residential occupancy restrictions that limit the number of occupants to three unrelated individuals in a dwelling. Petitioner states, quote, "Five people live and work on the house renovating it," end quote. Petitioner also, quote, "expects to complete the renovation September 15 through the 30th," end quote. And the petitioner further states that the construction crew will then move to the next five houses that he has just purchased. I will say, from our department comments, the Office of Urban Development Codes and Development Services, they received multiple complaints from neighbors that the house was operating as a sober living facility. Code enforcement revenue and Tuscaloosa Police Department officers visited the properties on, visited the property on separate occasions to follow up on these complaints. Each department received similar stories from the tenants regarding the use of the property as a sober living rehabilitation home. However, petitioner does dispute this. Do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions? Thank you.
We did receive eight written comments in opposition to this application.
The petitioner can come forward at this time. And if you will, just state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name's Scott Fry. Steve Green's my business partner. I'm 1616 Fifth Avenue North in Bessemer, Alabama. You mean my residence, my home?
Either residence or your business, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, it's fine.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, the honorable board members. My name's Scott Fry. Just, I'm the founder of Lyons Reentry Centers. We have various properties. It's a six-month program in providing housing, jobs, and transportation to the jobs. Primarily, most of our men and women work at Mercedes and Vance. They have worked at Pico Foods and other places as well. Our participants coming primarily come from homeless, veterans, in jail and prisons, and after six months, if the person still needs help, we try to find them graduate housing, or we have other houses that we purchase for them because it's hard for them to get a decent place to live. We're trying to help folks out. We're not a nonprofit. We are for-profit, but we don't take any tax dollars. We do this all out of our investors and investments. We have a business model, only works because you have certain number of people that you can get in a house, and then they can work and they can pay their bill. So they can't make it on their own, generally. So we don't deal in overcrowding. I mean, we're talking about a house, this is a house that's 1.43 acres, it's 1,996 square feet, has six bedrooms, three full baths, one carpet, one carport and a detached garage. You can't see the vehicles from the, from the streets, so there's no offset parking needed or any problems with that. We only have two vehicles anyway because we don't let them go and do what they want to do when they, when they're, when they want to do it. Any issues regarding the Tuscaloosa Police Department and those types of things, we handle that very quickly. We dismiss the people. Generally, our houses are graduate housing, unless they're overflow from, from our other facility, like say in Bessemer, that kind of thing, or they have a good job at Mercedes. Primarily, this particular house, we've been rehabbing for maybe a couple months now or something like that. Steve Green would have been able to speak better on that issue, but our plan with the house is to rehab it and then sell it, and then, and then move on. I mean, that's, that's, so really, being here and asking for a variance was really premature, but if we could get a variance, that would be nice. You know, these people are disabled under the Federal Housing Authorities Act, and, you know, we don't want to be all tangled up in legal mess and cause problems, and we're just here to help. We're trying to help. We do this in Bessemer, Troy, I spoke to the council at, in Montgomery, had, had a very good, positive feedback there from those nine members on a variance that we were going to buy a piece of property, and they granted it 100%. We, we would just ask that you give us the same latitude that if you're talking about unrelated We would just ask that you give us the same latitude that if you're talking about unrelated people, how many people can you put in a house? We have six bedrooms. We could get comfortably 10 to 12 people. We're not trying to overcrow. We're not trying to put 20 or 30 people. It's not a facility. We're not trying to do all that. Primarily, we're really trying to house our rehab workers, ideally. That's what we'd like to do. Let's see. So as in the City of Emmons case that Justice Ginsburg was talking about, that she was talking about, that, talking about a reasonable case. This is a reasonable case. We're not asking you to go, you know, you can get 12 people who have families. I could go to get asylum seekers right now, not to be racist or anything like that. But they tend to have big families. We could put a family in there. Now, we don't want to go down that road. We're trying to help people out. Homeless, veterans and the unfortunate people who are trying to turn their lives around after they get out of jail and prison. So I'll ask any questions that you may have.
You mentioned, Mr. Fry, that you're a business partner of Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, explain the business. Because, and let me ask one other thing. I have the application petition that was filled out. It's got Mr. Green's name on it.
Yes, sir.
And I understand you're a business partner. But did you have any hand in filling this out?
No, sir.
And the reason I ask that, several things were omitted.
Okay.
That are required.
Okay.
And NA was put in there. And this is a variance.
Okay.
A hardship has to be.
Well.
And let me finish, please. All we're looking at tonight is a variance from the occupancy regulations. That is all this board is looking for.
Right.
And again, it's a variance. And I clearly articulated in my opening comments, I don't know if you were here when the meeting started.
No, sir, I wasn't. I was trying to get into the building.
Well, I explained to everyone here, other petitioners in the audience, what a variance is. And again, that was omitted in the application. You may not know that or not. Maybe this is the first time you're hearing this?
Like I said, Steve's in Florida getting ready for a hurricane, unfortunately, so.
So tell me again about your business, but specific to this house and the other five houses that are mentioned. Is, and a question when you explain that, additional question. You've got five people you're asking that live and work there while they're remodeling this house. And it says in your petition, your business partner filled out, he's asking for this. Today's the 28th of August. He's asking for this for 15. They should be done with the work from the 15th through the 30th of September. I'm interpreting this, that's what you're asking for. If I could, staff, is that, is that a fair understanding or reading of this?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Gilliam.
So you're coming before this board to ask, as you said earlier, your intentions are to flip the house. So that's 15 days, 30 days, 32 days? From now, you've gone through this process to ask for that. And then you're saying they're moving on and the house goes on the market. Is that correct?
That's our ideal goal. Since I'm already here, I would like to ask for variance to have it used for.
But what, let me finish, please. The application that your business partner filled out clearly states what I just read.
Right.
And you're not aware of that. And then he omitted the two sections that relate to the legal standard, which is a hardship. So you're, what are your intentions? You've said two different things.
Well, our first intention, if we can't get a variance, then would be to sell it. Just sell it, be done with it and sell it. Because we don't want to cause any problems. That's first and foremost. If it's a problem for the neighborhood, we'll just, you know, we'll handle it.
We've got two items that were omitted here clearly. And I'll read it to you because you probably haven't seen this. Explain in detail any special circumstances or conditions that are particular to the property or buildings where a strict application of the ordinance would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of such property or building. Do you have anything to offer?
Well, I mean, basically it would primarily be for the participants, they'd be homeless. So where we'd be putting people out on the street that definitely don't need to be, you know, just because they're unrelated.
But this question is posed in view of every other R1 house in the neighborhood. So you have similar homes throughout the neighborhood that are zoned R1. You can use this house and have, you could have three. Is that correct, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, it says three unrelated.
You could have three, that's the city ordinance, without coming before this body. Three roommates, three of us who are unrelated could live there and comply with existing ordinance. So that could be achieved without coming before this board, simply on the ordinance we're looking for. So you're asking for something greater than that.
Yes, sir.
What is specific and peculiar, unique about this property that is not allowing you to follow that ordinance?
It has six bedrooms. It has, is.
It can have 100 bedrooms, sir. What specifically?
And I get that. It's a house that meets our graduate, ideally for our graduate program to succeed.
So you have a business partner and you're saying your hardship is your business partner, not the city ordinance and what every other individual that's R classified, R1, that follows the same code across the city or any other classification, but three unrelated. So you're, I guess if it hurts your, to help me, if it hurts your business model, is that a financial consideration going over three?
That would be, yes.
Okay. And you just stated it's a financial consideration. Financial is not a reason to grant a hardship. Because every developer under the sun could come in, in an argument where that hurts their business. So that can't be looked at as a hardship. Let's move on to the second one. You, your partner omitted. Explain in detail how the granting of the variance, use variance would be in harmony with the character of the surrounding area and why it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood.
It sits back way on a hill area. There's no problems with parking whatsoever. And so there would be no issues with parking or, quite frankly, if people would just stay in the house, they wouldn't even see them. They wouldn't even know that they were there.
If they just stay in the house? Please, 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 y'all, please. So if they just stay in the house?
Well, they stay on the property. I mean, it's 1.43 acres. There's a lot of acres.
Oh, you're saying if the residents of your property just stay in the house, then the people in the neighborhood wouldn't know they were there?
That's correct.
So if they're next to a daycare, isn't there a daycare next door to the property?
I have no idea.
So you don't know about the neighborhood where the house you've put and the people that you've put in there?
I have no idea.
So you don't know if it's a detriment to the neighborhood by not knowing about the neighborhood?
What's the, what's the difference between a family that has 10 people, has six cars in the yard and their kids are on dope? I deal with that all the time.
But that has nothing to do with the ordinance?
But I understand that. But you, the law is dealing with reasonable. The Supreme Court has come back and it said you have to have a reasonable excuse, i.e. maybe there's a issue with parking or there's like overcrowding this or there's a problem.
And members of the board, as legal counsel for the board and the city, I want to emphasize that that is not a correct statement of the law. We have dealt with this several times already. This board has approved other facilities that are sober living facilities who've requested a reasonable accommodation through our special exceptions. We attempted to do that, I believe, here and were told that that was not what they were requesting. So this board can only vote on the petition before it. I also want to emphasize that there has been no request made for a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. And as counsel for the city, I'm concerned that this would even meet the definition of disabled. The other ones that we've had have all been specifically sober living facilities for those who are dealing with the disease of addiction. We have not had any evidence here that the members of this particular home are dealing with the same issues, only that they are, you know, recently paroled or put on probation or coming out of the VA. There may certainly be some in there, but we don't have enough evidence at this point to be able to determine if the Fair Housing Act even would apply had they requested a reasonable accommodation, which they did not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
So we would need to request a reasonable accommodation? Is that what you're saying?
At this point, the city is certainly concerned that it has been told multiple stories about what is happening here. But of course, we would review any request for a reasonable accommodation if it were to meet those standards. But again, that would have to, we attempted to do that and we're told that that was not what was happening here.
Okay. Just because obviously we're just running around in circles. Can we get a variance just to finish the house? We'll just finish the house with the folks that are there. They can stay there, they can finish the house and then we're done.
You're in business and you purchased a home, you're a business partner. And your intent, you initially stated was to sell the home, finish the construction, flip the house, sell it. That's your business model, that's fine. There's noth, I'm struggling. Again, I've heard no hardship that I see as a hardship. Anyone else who flips houses, you're in the real estate business. You may have other efforts that you're doing with these folks. But in essence, this specific issue is about this house and the ordinance. Anyone else who's building a house, remodeling, flipping, whatever you choose to do with it, you're putting up your workers in the house. That is not something that is what you're doing and you choose to do. That's, the ordinance is not hindering you from hiring, paying and having workers like 99% or more in the world who live in their own home. You're choosing to go about doing it this way. I don't see that as a hardship or valid to ask you. We have a legal standard we're following and we're looking specifically at this ordinance. So any other questions?
No.
So then what's your definition of unrelated then?
I'll let the city address the ordinance.
That is not what we're here for today. The only thing that is before this board is the petition itself. So we're not going to get into a debate right now about all of the specific definitions. The board can only look at what's before it. And if we need to get a debate later about that, that's fine. But the board has to deal with the petition before it.
And you said it also that some of the people work at Mercedes, some of the people work at Pico, and you all provide transportation. So who's working on the house if they're working at Mercedes and Pico, like?
I'm saying generally in our other program. I'm not saying for that particular house.
So at this house, the people that are staying there right now are not working on the house. They are working at Mercedes and Pico.
No, they're working on the house.
Okay, sir. The petition, you stated you didn't fill out. I don't know that you read.
I'm just thrown into this. So, you know, I'm very unprepared and I really apologize.
No problem.
I appreciate your honesty there, but your business partner did this and he did a poor job in doing this because he omitted what is specifically required. No, he can read and write, I'm assuming. He chose not to put that down here. He has not supplied us with the hardship that's valid. You've attempted to. To my satisfaction, you have not met that. That is what we have to have to do. We are only looking at the ordinance and you're asking for a variance. So do you have anything else to add?
No.
Any other questions?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have the public comments. And in opposition, I'd like to start with Councilman Lanier.
Cassius Lanier, 17, Overhill Road. Well, I had a lot to say, but I don't think they even met the requirements to go further. But we can save us a lot of time. I know I've got a ton of neighbors. You see, the neighborhood here is in full support. We're totally against the transition home or halfway house. Slap that in the middle of our neighborhood. It makes no sense. It's next door to a daycare center that's been there for years. Most of these neighbors been here for 30-plus years, raised their children, now raising their grandsons. I've been there 20 years. I'm just saying, this is an established neighborhood. For the most part, we keep our neighborhoods groomed, we keep it up. And the partner who, I guess Mr. Stephen Green's partner, I've been reaching out to them for, I know, four months, five months, because they were remodeling the house then. I actually went over there first about four or five months ago. I got in touch with code enforcement, told them that somebody's trying to open up a shelter or halfway house in the neighborhood. And of course, code enforcement, TPD, did their due diligence. And the owner then said that they were gonna just remodel the house and fix it up and sell it. That was four months ago. I got neighbors here who can verify. And so now I'm hearing that they need to fix up the house again. I don't know, I remember a storm coming knocking the house down. But this is a for-profit business, we know that. And for them to say that the people are working on the house, no. I actually, myself, I think a week ago, pulled up on the house because I followed the workers from Cash Savers to the neighborhood. But they had their work vests on, construction work. And they actually rode, went to the house. And I guess they thought I was a regular neighbor. And I got to speaking with, one of them actually went to school, Central High School. And I don't want to name their name, but they're in the home. And they said they would, their time would be up in October. So this house is already functioning as a halfway house. So, you know, them working there, no, sir, everybody works. Everybody worked construction, Mercedes or somewhere. Nobody's working on the house, though. And my neighbors can verify that. So I'm just saying, they're already moving in the fashion that they had got clearance and they hadn't. So I'm sure I speak for all my neighbors, but we're totally against this. And my thing is, if I'm on double duty as a councilman, I'm against it because you didn't go through the right protocol. Number one. And number two, put that in a commercial area. You know, I'm not against this kind of program, but it's a right program in the wrong location. It's not for a residential neighborhood. And if, you know, he's for that so bad, let's put one next door to his house and see how you like that. But not in our neighborhood. That's, thank you.
Judge England?
I thought I was at the bottom of the list. I just came here to basically say what my councilman just said. But even so, it's important to note something. If you look at the words of the petition, someone has actually been having five unrelated people for a substantial period of time, as if they can take the law into their own hands. Well, in Tuscaloosa, they can't do that. That's why y'all here. So I know you're gonna do your job, so I, see how short I am?
Ms. Bearfield?
Hi, how you doing? My name is LaVentris Bearfield and I'm resident at 24 Skyline Drive. And first of all, the gentleman that was up here talking is, has told a whole lot of things that are not true. And so a young man that lives in his, in his facility, actually, I came out of my house and he was sitting on the porch with my roommate. And I'm just looking at him like, so he told me out of his mouth that he lives at 20 Skyline Drive in a recovery home, that it was seven guys that stayed there and they paid $300 a week to live there. They got transportation to work, they helped take him to work. I didn't say a word to that guy. I kept on going where I was going. I came back, him and another guy that lived there were walking away from my house. I was just floored. I left my house and came out and went out, came back home another day. This guy was up there ringing my doorbell. So I just flat out told him, look, do not come to my house, period. These people are for profit only. They want to make as much money as they can before they leave the neighborhood. they leave the neighborhood. They have people that are in and out of prison live there. They also do not do background checks on the people that live there. We are next to a daycare, they're right next to a daycare center. My biggest concern is about those children, because you could have pedophiles living there and not know anything about it. And also, Mr. Lanier talked about it's an established neighborhood. Let's face it, it's a single citizen's neighborhood. Just about all of us are older people, and got grandkids and stuff that come to visit. It's just not safe for us. We are walking victims to these people. And so, I don't want them here. First of all, he told so many lies, he couldn't even get it straight, but I'm glad everybody here can hear. We do not want them, if he comes back with another excuse, we don't need 12 people, seven people, five people, four people, living in our neighborhood, in and out of jails, in and out of recovery centers. And by the way, recovery centers are very cyclic, so it'd be people in and out of our neighborhood before, more than we could even keep up with. So, no, we do not want them there. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
Good evening. Erskine Simmons, 25 Woodbine Road, Tuscaloosa, dead in the smack of Skyline Park neighborhood. Totally against it, enough has been said by my neighbors and friends. Just one quick thing, if we can get the picture put back on the screen for the house in question, and I'll show you exactly where the daycare is located. While that's being pulled up, my neighbors, can you all please stand just for a quick second? Neighbors? I see these faces, some of them just about every day. I walk the neighborhood, I drive around the neighborhood. When I realized what was going on next to this property, my granddaughter, she's one year old, the most precious girl to me in this entire universe, she's on the left side of this home right here. When I discover what was going on in that house, I make it a point every single day to drive by two and three times, not to check on the occupancy and the daycare center, but to see what's going on next to the house. They can't come out and play, as they would typically normally do. Even though there've been some hot field days, there's plenty of shade trees in the area. They can't come out and enjoy the shade, because now they're living in fear of what's going on right next to them. Construction, no. I doubt there's a building permit, I haven't seen one posted. Do you see a building permit posted, as it should be posted, on the house that's being remodeled or under construction? I think not. We're totally against it. The owner of the daycare, she is here today. Everything is legal and binding, there's another daycare a few blocks over, Skyline Elementary School, my Skyline Elementary School. A fat person like me can walk down the hill, get to Skyline within less than 10 minutes. All right? So, we have children going to and from school, walking the neighborhood, all the time. We don't need this, y'all. We ask that you agree with us. Thank you.
If I could, just by a show of hands, I know the neighbors have already stood earlier. If you could, if you're opposed to the petition, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. And... Do... If you recall earlier in the opening comments, four people are allowed, four have been met in opposition, four are also allowed in favor. Is there anyone here in favor of the petition who would like to come forward and speak? No? Okay. Per our rules, Mr. Frye, it's totally optional on a rebuttal. You can come forward, you've got two minutes.
I just want to thank the board. You know, as far as, I got kind of thrown into this, and I apologize to the citizens of Skyline. I was not watching what was going on, Steve Green was. We're gonna have a discussion on the drive back home. But I do apologize to everybody in this room. We will handle it. We'll just, we'll finish the rehab, and then we'll just sell the house. That's what we're gonna do.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Is that okay?
Sorry, y'all. At this point, we're closing public comment and moving to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
Man, things pretty cut and dry, there's no hardship, they didn't even file the application. I do not see any reason to approve this.
I see no hardship, no reason to approve.
Yeah, I think it was obvious from Mr. Frye, and again, if his business partner was handling this and he didn't fill it out, doesn't sound like he really knew what was in it. In saying that, this is the hardest standard, a variance is the hardest legal standard compared to a special exception, that we hear on this board. And it is in the law, and state code, and city ordinance, what has to be met, that by no stretch was met. Again, it was omitted on the application, was a huge red flag. And I appreciate everyone who came out, it's good to see people supporting causes, either for or against, and engaged in their community for the right things. But hardship was just not met, period, here. And that's what we're tasked to look at, so I am not in favor of granting the variance.
I agree with other board members, no hardship was given, nor was it met, I'm not in favor.
I also have to agree, I'm not in favor. I couldn't find a hardship with this case, but I do want to thank all the people that supported their neighborhood and showed up today.
If there's no further comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. In ZBA-84-23, Stephen Green petitions for a variance from the occupancy regulations on the property located at 20 Skyline Drive, Zoned R1 in Council District 7, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
No.
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 The petition failed. If we could...
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could have you clear the lobby for us, we need to continue, please. Thank you so much, we appreciate you all coming, thank you.
Okay. I think we can go ahead and move on to ZBA-85-23. Eric Wilson petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at 801 Queen City Avenue, Zoned R3H, Council District 4. So, here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view, this is right at the corner of Queen City and 8th Street. Nearby short-term rentals, so this is in the tourist overlay district, so that's why you see a significant amount of nearby short-term rentals, but this one is historic. So, here's a view of the front of the house, and then the side of the house, this is off of 8th Street. All view over the fence. The request, Eric Wilson will be the primary contact and will be available 24 hours a day. Petitioner has experience managing a property in Tennessee. The house is equipped with security cameras. The house is owner-occupied, and while the home is being rented, the owner will stay with relatives in town. It has three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Petitioner is requesting six adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff does recommend six adults and three vehicles, but with the stipulation that no vehicles may be parked on-street while the house is being rented short-term. Do you have any questions for staff?
Because it's in the TOD, it's only coming before this board because it's in a historic
Correct.
district. But if it was across the street, perhaps, even in the TOD, it would not have to come.
Have to be a little bit further away, but yeah.
But just outside of the H designation.
Correct. If it was not historically designated, it wouldn't have to come. It'd be all right.
Thank you.
We did receive two written comments in support of this application.
Good evening, Board. My name is Eric Wilson, I'm the owner of the property, 801 Queen City Avenue.
Mr. Wilson, just tell us a little bit about your plan, and if you have ever managed, I know you referenced a property in Tennessee, I didn't know if that was short-term rental or not.
It was, yes, sir. The plan for this property, this is my dwelling, this is where I live, only me. I do intend to, if the board approves, to rent it for a maximum of probably six of the game days, perhaps graduation, no more than that, I don't want the wear and tear on the house. The house can certainly fit six adults and three vehicles. The picture that the board was shown of the backyard is the parking pad. I personally don't use it, park out front, but the pad is 33 feet, at least the square portion is 33 feet across and 33 feet deep, with also a section extending back to 8th Street. So, plenty of room for three even large SUV vehicles. I also own the property across the street, which is my law office. It has parking as well, so if people rent the house, they will have access for friends that come over to park in the law office building, so that neighbors are not overly burdened by any guests that they may have during their time of rental. I formerly owned a property in Swanee, Tennessee, and we rented that for similar-type weekends, people coming into town.
You reference the parking, and obviously, the Office of City Engineer has reviewed the plan and your parking pad, and that's the recommendation that's on the board.
Yes, sir.
On the screen behind me. It's imperative that it's communicated to your guest, if it's approved, to your short-term renters, that they have to park. It might not be the most convenient thing, but it is off-street, but that is a strict guideline in the ordinance, even though it's legal to park where you park, you can, but your guests can't.
Yes, sir.
During that activity.
Yes, sir.
So, that's very primary concern there. Any, and obviously, you stated your law office is right across the street, so if it's during those hours, you're working there Monday through Friday typically?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So, you're, and you, again, will be the 24-hour?
Yes, sir.
Contact?
Yes, sir. I will be staying with my parents, who live in Indian Hills Drive.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We don't have anyone currently signed up to speak either for or against the petition. Now is the opportunity, if you'd like to come forward. No, in that case, we will go ahead and close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I see no issue granting the short-term rental of several in the area. I'm yes.
I'm in agreement with my fellow board member.
Yeah, I think Mr. Wilson demonstrated he has some experience out of state with serving as a STR owner. I just think as long as the parking stays off-street and is clearly communicated with the other rules, I'm in favor of granting it.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I'm also in favor, I want to say that I do appreciate the fence that you put up and the way that you put it up off of 8th Street. I know it opens into the property, which I appreciate that, and again, with the parking, parking seems to be such an issue there, but appreciate the way you're handling that.
If there are no other comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. In the matter of ZBA-85-23, Eric M. Wilson petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at 801 Queen City Avenue, Zoned R3H in Council District 4, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, we're gonna present these next four together. Bama VMB, Kim Roberts, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of the properties located at 900, 901, 903, and 905 Seventeenth Avenue East, Zoned RA2, Council District 5. So, here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, this is right over to Alberta, and a closer aerial view, so these are dome houses, which is why we're gonna present those together. So, there aren't any nearby short-term rentals, but these were previously approved to be a short-term rental last year. So, here's a view of the houses, and then that parking area. Bama Vacation Rentals will be the primary point of contact, and they will be available 24 hours a day. Petitioner has been in the property management business for 15 years. Security measures include signage, rule forms, damage deposits, cameras, keypad, lock boxes, and noise detection systems. Petitioner states these homes will have a mix of short-term and long-term stays that are more than 30 nights, but they will not be used as permanent homes. Each dome has four bedrooms and four bathrooms, and they were previously approved, as I mentioned, last year for six adults, three vehicles. The petitioner is requesting six adults, three vehicles per dome, and if approved, staff does recommend that. There are 12 parking spaces. Do you have any questions for staff?
You mentioned these were previously approved?
Correct.
Why is it coming back? Is it change of ownership?
The ownership has changed, the property has been sold.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions?
Hello, Kim Roberts with Bama Vacation Rentals. It did, they just changed ownership on Friday and transferred all of that, so...
And your address, please.
I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
I'm sorry, 13752 West Lake Drive, 35405.
So, were you managing these prior or not?
I was not.
It mentioned a mix of short-term and long-term, is the business question.
We do that with most of our properties.
But these, were these strictly STRs, or would they also be mixed?
They were done the same way, with a mix of short and long-term.
And did you communicate with the previous owner at all? I'm just curious how their year went.
Only with the realtor that was helping them manage it, and they had no problems, you know, so everything's being transferred over, all of the guests that are currently booked, sorry, will be just shifted over.
Any other questions for Ms. Roberts? Just with the parking, and you're well aware, there is adequate parking for what's been requested and what's been suggested by city staff, that's just paramount, that we keep everything off-street in a legal parking spot.
Not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. Okay, we do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. This would be your opportunity, if anyone would like to speak? No? Okay, we're closing public comment and moving to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I see no issues, just a change of ownership. Good with it?
I agree, it's the perfect spot for it. No change of ownership is the only thing different, so I agree.
Yeah, I think we've heard no issues, and city staff has reported no issues in the previous year, so I'm in favor of granting the petition, as per staff recommendations.
I agree, I'm in favor.
I'm also in agreement.
Okay, there's no further comment, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Hayes, these can be handled with one vote, or does it need to be a four readings?
Unfortunately, four readings.
Okay. All right, in that case, we'll start with ZBA-86-23, Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 900, 17th Avenue East, Zoned RA2 in Council District Five, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Petition passed. ZBA-87-23, Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 901, 17th Avenue East, Zoned RA2 in Council District Five, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Petition passed. ZBA-88-23, Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 903, 17th Avenue East, Zoned RA2 in Council District Five, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Petition passed. ZBA-89-23, Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 905, 17th Avenue East, Zoned RA2 in Council District Five, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on, since ZBA 9023 was withdrawn, we'll move on to ZBA 9123. Andrew Daughlin petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3207 Shannon Drive, Zoned R3, Council District Six. So here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and a closer aerial There are not any nearby short-term rentals. Here's a view of that house and the driveway. Just another view. The petitioner states their family will be the primary contact at the moment while they are obtaining a local property manager within the next month. Petitioner has experience with three long-term rentals, two properties located in Birmingham and one in Tuscaloosa. Security measures include a security camera, noise monitor, and keypad lock. The house is not owner occupied and will be used by the owner and family when it is not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. Petitioner is requesting six adults and three vehicles, and if approved, staff does recommend six adults and three vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Daughlin. I just moved from Birmingham to Dothen. My primary residence is 1203 Cambridge Road, Dothen, Alabama.
Okay, Mr. Daughlin, can you tell us about your experience? You've mentioned several rental properties. Were those all long-term?
Yes, all long-term.
Okay. You mentioned, you were in Birmingham prior, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so from Birmingham, you managed one here and two in Birmingham?
Two in Birmingham, one here, since I graduated in 2010 from Alabama.
Okay. And you stated you moved to Dothen?
Just in the past year.
Okay.
Professional reasons.
And it did state, I believe in your earlier comments, that your family?
Yes. We're going to use this property as, we kind of have family in Dothen, Birmingham, Tuscaloosa, and Decatur, and we're going to use this property, others, we mean, hope to have some short-term rental, but primarily as family coming together and staying here, just like we are this weekend and last weekend.
Now, who, obviously you're moving to Dothen, and you did previously manage remote, I understand that. Dothen's a little farther than Birmingham.
Family in Birmingham.
Okay, so family in Birmingham will be the 24/7 contact to deal with the situation if it was to arise in rent?
Honestly, if it started to rent more often than I expect, which I don't, I expect maybe two or three game-day weekends, I would probably hire a local, like I mentioned in the application, a local company to help with that.
Any other questions, Mr. Daughlin? No? Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you all.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. At this time, would anyone like to speak on this petition? No? We will close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
Being these guys, family in Birmingham to oversee the property, I see no issue with this short-term rental.
I just wondered, with, I asked the city this, so we have no stipulation about the range of wanting them to, normally, is there a range of living within a certain range or anything? Because normally, we like from, because we've talked about being in town and not so far, is there, nothing specifically?
There is nothing specifically in the code. The board has typically followed a pattern of wanting local contact in case something happens, but there's not anything that specifically requires them to be in town.
I just have concern about that being the fact that game-day weekends, someone being 54 miles away and something happening, and being able to get and handle it, that kind of thing, so that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, the, per the petition, application, the comments, and Mr. Daughlin reiterated that, they had previously, he had previously managed a property here from Birmingham. He mentioned there were several in their family group who plan on using this in the general area of Birmingham, being the closest, and he also stated he was potentially going to look at a management company based on the volume if approved. I think based on that, I'm in favor of granting it. I just think that needs to be, be looked at, and the option of hiring a management company is.
Contact with Bama Rentals, the, Mrs. Kim Roberts.
Okay. That would probably be a very good path to take, moving forward, but I am in favor of granting it, per the conditions.
Oh, yeah, I agree, Ms. Coley. That's my concern, the closest contact being in Birmingham. If it's something small, someone being in Birmingham, that wouldn't be an issue, but if it's something that requires immediate attention, Birmingham is a little bit far for my comfort, so I would suggest having someone close as well. Other than that, I'm in favor.
And I never thought, I would have liked to have asked the petitioner if he had known any of the neighbors. I think where the location is, it's going to be fine. I don't have a problem with it. And mainly because it seems like he's been successful already in renting, and he knows what rules and regulations, what's to be expected. I have no problem with it.
Okay, with no further comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. ZBA-91-23, Andrew Daughlin petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3207 Shannon Drive, Zoned R3 in Council District Six, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, beginning the vote with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, we'll move on to our next case, ZBA 9223. Liv Met, Laura Wolf petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1613 Second Avenue, Zoned RD1, Council District Two. So here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, then a closer aerial Some nearby short-term rentals, just to the southwest. Here's a view of the house from the street, and then the parking area in the rear. Petitioner will be the primary contact in case of emergency. They have two years of experience managing this property. They did not have any issues with the previous short-term rental guests. The house is not owner occupied and will remain vacant when it is not being short-term rented. The house is three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. Property was previously approved for six adults and three vehicles in 2021, but unfortunately, their business license lapsed, so that is why they are back. Petitioner is requesting six to eight adults and five vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
In the, that's a dedicated alley in the rear, that's the off-street access?
Correct.
Is it the same petition that laps?
It is. So it's the same owners, they've owned this house the whole time, they just, their business license lapsed a year, so they have to come back and be treated as new.
No issues before?
No issues before.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Wolf?
She's teaching right now, Ms. Wolf.
Just state your address also, Mr. Wolf.
Oh, 16, it's 1953 Nottingham Place, I'm sorry. We just moved not too long ago. Yeah, we've, we've owned the house for a couple of years. It's previously been approved as short-term rental. We have 10 or so other properties that are long-term rentals, and don't have any problems with those. We also have a short-term beach condo that we use as a rental. If you can put the picture back up of the overhead of the close-up of the house? Yeah, looking at, looking at the picture, the parking area off the, off the alley is more than adequate for three vehicles, and looking at the, at the accessory structure in the back, there's a double gate that opens into the carport, the back of the house that sticks out as a, as a carport, and from my understanding of the, of the rules, you can stack two cars, you can put one in the carport, you can probably fit two in the carport, but I've never tried, and one behind it, and still, still have available space in the parking, the gravel parking behind the house, to get in and out without any problem. I just mowed the yard there yesterday, so.
And the lapse was just y'all chose not to renew the business license?
I think my wife just, just forgot to do it. She's, she works another job, and she teaches, and, you know, things, things can be hectic.
Life happens.
Yeah.
What was your experience when you did rent it in your previous application?
Really good. It's, I don't know if you can tell, or have looked at the map from it, it's about a block back from Guthrie's on 15th Street, and the new Second Avenue Bridge to the campus is just been a godsend. So it's, it rents really well, and we, we try to, to keep it to families, you know, it's, it's got a good spot for kids, so it's mostly a game-day thing. Our daughter, one of our daughters lived there for a month over the summer. Another one of our kids was going to be there in college, but she, she had an extra roommate, and so they ended up getting one of our other rental houses that had another bedroom, so.
Any other questions?
Do you have any idea what the square footage of this house is?
Off the top of my head, I would guess 20, between 22 and 2400? I'm not really sure. That's, that's just kind of ballparking it from it being a, a three-bedroom, one and a half bath, but it's got a, what was formerly a porch that's been enclosed in the back too, so that's, that's a fairly good amount of square footage.
Is that, oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, in, the, the porch was enclosed, and then they built on the, the carport, and there's, I think the old, that was an old garage in the back, so.
Thank you.
We don't have any other questions, unless you've got something else to offer. Uh, no? Trust y'all to it?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against the petition. Now is your last opportunity? No? So we're going to close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I've had a short terminal before, no issues. Sounds like just business laps. I see no issue with this short terminal.
I'm in agreement, a no issue here. Seems like they know what they're doing. They have several rental properties in a good area, so I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. They've got experience in the short-term rental market, as well as the other rentals in the community, and serving as their point of contact, so I'm in favor of granting the petition under the suggestion of the city staff.
I agree, I'm in favor.
And in favor of the six adults and three vehicles. It seems like that is appropriate, since you've been successful with that. I'm in agreement with that.
No further board comment, we'll move to a reading of the petition and vote. In ZBA-92-23, Liv Met, Laura Wealth, Laura Wolf petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1613 Second Avenue, Zoned RD1 in Council District Two, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Moving on to ZBA 9323, Adam Zucker petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3028 Fourth Court East, Zoned R1, Council District Seven. So here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. There are not any nearby short-term rentals. It's a view of the house from the street, and then that driveway. Christina and Adam Zucker will be the primary contacts in case of emergency. This is the petitioner's first experience with short-term rentals. Security measures include a ring doorbell with an additional security camera and automatic floodlights, as well as keyless entry door locks with an added lock box should the power go out. The home is owner occupied, and while the home is being rented, the petitioner states that they plan to take the opportunity to explore Alabama, or maybe stay local by visiting Lake Tuscaloosa. They have a local handyman on call if anything occurs, if they happen to be out of town. The house has four bedrooms and two bathrooms. Petitors are requesting eight adults and four vehicles, and if approved, staff recommends six adults, three vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff? We did receive two written comments in opposition of this application.
Okay, I've, the petitioner's here, if you'd please come forward. If you will, just state your names and address, please.
My name is Adam Zucker. I reside at 3028 Fourth Court East in Tuscaloosa.
And Christina Zucker, same address.
Okay, tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do, or anything else you'd like to add.
So we have a freshman who's new to UA, and he's not very happy.
So we have a freshman who's new to UA and he's not very happy because we followed. We're from Southern California and moved to Tuscaloosa, so that's why you saw a pod in the driveway. This is our primary residence and we, as we came last year to see and tour the, the university, we all fell in love, the three of us did fall in love with the area. So we thought, hey, what a perfect opportunity to share, I'm a designer, I'm interior designer, so I thought we can share this opportunity with other families that want to come visit with their kids, graduation, games, and so forth. It is our primary residence, so we're not looking to leave it or anything like that. And we also have a, three handymen actually that have been working on the house, so have had verbal conversations with them. If anything were to go wrong with the house or anything at all while we were gone, they would be there on call.
Now, you mentioned when you're gone, would you be traveling somewhere else or staying in the community?
This is our first time in Tus-, in Alabama, so I heard that Lake Tuscaloosa is amazing and it's really close by, so it would be something that we just want to tour the area ourself and stay within Alabama, so.
And I believe it said in the earlier screen that y'all, this is your first attempt at, at short-term rental?
Yes, but we do own another long-term rental here in Tuscaloosa, so we, it's already occupied since July.
And we have had experience with other rentals in California as well, not short-term, but long-term rentals.
And your other long-term here, are you the point of contact?
Yes.
Two of you? And you do know off-street parking, even though street parking may be legal in front of the property, it's not allowed if you're approved and engaging in short-term rental.
Okay.
You have to have your residents or your guests park off-street, so.
We do have a carport as well as could fit about another two SUVs pretty comfortably. We've done it before when we moved in, our son was staying before he could move in the dorms, as well as having the contractors there and we had no issues with three vehicles.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Who would be your contact if y'all are out of town and then an issue arrives?
We would be the contact, so we have smart locks on all entrances into the house, so, you know, that's all digital. And then I even had a lockbox installed on the outside should the power go out, so easy access for anyone who's there to be able to use a key if the power were to go out.
We also have our son locally who's willing to help as kind of one of the reasons as well to be able to assist us in some need because he's literally, his dorm is maybe one and a half miles from our location.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against, this would be your last opportunity. Okay, we will close public discussion and move to board comments, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I mean, being that it's owner-occupied and as well as they're having a son here to look while they're traveling, I'm in a favor with the, favor of the staff's recommendation, six adults, three vehicles.
Welcome to Tuscaloosa. And so I'm in favor, they're using to the six nights, I mean, six adults and three vehicles for thirty nights and one year, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. Based on the Zucker's comments, they have familiarity with being a landlord both in this community and out of state when they relocated. So I would just, if approved, I would recommend highly in your rules that are posted that you stress no off-street parking in there because it is against the ordinance while it's being rented. That being said, I'm in favor of approving with staff recommendations.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I agree with the board, I'm also in favor.
If there are no further comments by the board, we'll move to a reading of the petition and vote. ZB A dash ninety-three dash twenty-three, Adam Zucker petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirty twenty-eight Fourth Court East, zoned R one in Council District seven, subject to the following conditions: a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, we'll move on to ZB A ninety-four twenty-three, Gregory Binion petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirty-two forty-nine Short Seventeenth Street, zoned R three, Council District one. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view of the property. There are not any nearby short-term rentals. It's a view of the house. Gregory Binion will be the primary contact in case of emergency and will be available twenty-four seven. This is the petitioner's first experience with short-term rentals. Security measures include cameras and keypad locks. The home is owner-occupied and while the home is being rented, the owner will stay, he states on his application that he will stay with family. The house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Petitioner is requesting eight adults and nine vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff? We only received one comment that said it was not for or against the application, just had some concerns as to what short-term rental really meant, what it would entail, but other than that, we didn't receive any other comments. There is a petitioner's representative that has a PowerPoint presentation, so I just want to give y'all a heads up.
Thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Brian Winter. My address is thirty-five fifteen Watermelon Road, Northport, Alabama, three five four seven three. And I am here tonight and I have the honor to represent Mr. Greg Binion and his mama, Mrs. Georgia Binion. And I brought a PowerPoint because when I saw this, I was just so impressed that I wanted to show you what they've done. I think this is good news for the city, so. Okay, there we go. So this is Binion's corner and it's on thirty-two forty-nine Short Street. This is over just west of West Lawn Middle School. And this is the house before and this is the house after. And Mr. Binion has completely cleaned the place up and redone it inside and out, including, I want to give you the specifics on it, has two thousand square feet, it's got three bedrooms, but one of the bedrooms has two, two queen beds and it's set up like a hotel room, it has two bathrooms, and we believe it has about ten parking spaces gated in and out of sight. Three parks on one side behind the gate, seven parks on the other side behind the gate. We don't need all ten spaces, but I wanted to show you what we think it is. So if you can look inside this house that was old and rundown, and it was an old family house that, that they, they got, they have absolutely made it a beautiful spot and we should all be proud of this. West Alabama and Mrs. Binion told me she was born in Northport, but she's lived in Tuscaloosa for a long time and Greg grew up, grew up here as well. As you can see, here are three of the bedrooms here. I did not get a picture of that second bed in there and I apologize for that, but it's got two full baths. And then here's the parking. You can see there's two gates here, one is on the left side and there's, there's space on this side of the gate and on the other side of the gate. And then the larger gate which you saw in the opening, this is to the right of the house and it comes in and it actually circles the house. So you can see you pretty much can drive two cars down that driveway and you can park two cars at the end. And I wanted to let you see what we were talking to about in terms of parking. So as you can see, these are the two areas of parking here. And where the truck and car are, I'll pull this out right here, the, that truck and car you saw were over in this area. So this goes to the outside on the right side of the house, which is where this beautiful gate is, and over here on this side is over here. And that is the shortest PowerPoint that I've ever done in the history of the city and I know that everybody watching at home is really, really disappointed, especially Ashley Kreitz. I will always do a short PowerPoint for Emily, but I always make mine extra long for Ashley. But with that being said, I know staff has recommended six occupants and three cars. I think you can see from here that I don't think there's any push on eight occupants and four cars, that would be four couples. But even so, you can get all four of those cars behind, so we would ask that, I don't think there's room for nine, but I think we would ask that we could get six cars in there, that would be fair, because you could easily have four in the back on that one side and two on the other. So our request tonight is very simply for eight people, which are the beds we have. So you have four queen beds in the house and then the corresponding cars. And I think there's plenty of room for that. And I know it's a little bit more than you recommended, but who would I be if I didn't ask for a little bit more? And I know y'all would be disappointed. But if, but you know, I never ask for anything that I don't think's reasonable, so thank you for listening and Greg is an entrepreneur. As you can see, he's got some talent and that is one proud mama back there and she ought to be because he's a, he's a fine guy and he's done a good job. Do y'all have any questions? If not, I'll shut up and y'all can get home soon.
Actually I do, and this may be for Mr. Binion unless you'd like to stand in. Simply, Mr. Binion, if you don't mind? House looks great, beautiful job on it. Just curious, I believe if you'll scroll back, Ms. Hayes?
Yeah, I was trying to do that for you. Can you do it? That doesn't want to seem to listen to me.
I think it was one of the earlier pages you had.
Kind of like my kids. There you go. Is that the one you want?
No, no, actually not your presentation, back to the staff report.
Okay.
I believe it said, oh, there, there you go. Yeah, the, there you go. And this is your first experience, Mr. Binion?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever managed any other property?
No, sir.
Rental, okay.
No, sir.
And you said you'd stay with family, I believe I saw that earlier.
Yes, sir.
So you'll be the twenty-four seven contact?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you put together any rules and regulations?
Yes, sir.
You have them, okay, good.
Yes, sir.
As long as they're posted and I don't think off-street parking is going to be an issue on your property, that's usually a big sticking point for a lot of properties. But that's all I had.
And the rules and regulations, Mr. Stewart, were attached to the application. He made it very clear in there that if you don't comply, you will be gone. And just so the record, Mr. Stewart, I don't know if you want this or should I give it to the court?
No, you can bring it up.
These are the neighbors.
Up here, fine.
Okay. Thank you. These are the neighbors who, you went, Mama Benyon went up and down the street and got some approval, thank yous for.
So I am curious, the house that is on the driveway side is so close to your driveway, are they in your list? Who owns that house?
Yes, they, yes, yes, ma'am.
And they, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
See, it's not, I mean, of course we take into consideration parking and number of people and all that, but eight people is a lot of people. And as close as they are to this other residence, that would be my concern because to me, you get into the party too loud, noise, trash.
Go ahead.
I, my name is Georgia Binion. I live at thirty-one sixteen Thirty-Eighth Avenue, but I mainly stays at thirty-two forty-nine where this residence is, so practically all the neighborhoods in the front and right beside it, we all know each other very well and I personally feel like that if we had this opportunity, that we could help the community, this would help the community, because when my son built this, all of my neighbors right beside her and Bishop Stewart and Miss Annie, they started improving their homes and there are some homes around the corner that said that they enjoyed.
Oh, I, I haven't doubted it's a beautiful home. I was talking about a crowd of people staying there for, eight people is a lot to be so close together in a neighborhood. And I think this is the, there, can you show the view of other short-term rentals in the area? I don't think there are any.
There are.
So this is a, this is a first for your neighborhood, correct?
So, okay. Okay.
And Miss Binion, and Gregory's biggest thing that we always look at and normally we look at the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
Based on that and then we limit it that way as opposed, and then the parking. So usually if you're going to have eight, we look for like four bedrooms and like more bathrooms and that kind of thing, so that's typically how we look at it, just because once you start getting people in three bedrooms and crowding like that, that's bring, that's what I think Ms. Ford is leading to about. So it's, that's typically how we do it, is a little bit bigger, the bigger the house, the more rooms you have, that's what we base it on.
We made one bedroom, it was two bedroom, but we opened the wall and made it to two queen side bed. That's the picture that he unfortunately didn't have, so it would accommodate for four people to that bed, the queen side bed, you know, in case it were children, that they would have their own personal room.
Sure.
And two adults. And that's why we opened it to make it like that. But if it needs to be six, it's okay.
I don't think you have to worry about Mama Binion renting anybody.
Oh, no, we're, we're sure of that, thank you.
She's, she's pretty tough.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Uh-oh, speak in favor.
We don't have anyone signed up, however, if you'd like to speak, please come forward.
Because I have no, no idea. I'm, I'm Henry Harris and.
Alpha Harris, fifty-five, thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-fourth place.
Okay.
But I've been knowing Binion all my life. And we, we inquire, we have some property on Short Eighteenth. But I was sent this letter and I don't think, I, I, I don't, I don't understand why does this, why does this concern me? Because I stayed, I stayed a good little piece around the corner from.
I'll let the staff address that on why they got the notification.
Yeah.
So we send within a certain radius all of the properties that are, all of the owners that are listed on the deeds for the properties that are within five-hundred-foot radius, we send a notification out for the, in case you would like to come speak on it.
Oh, okay, well, it's a very promising area.
Absolutely.
I can tell you that right now. It's a very promising area. And I, I have no interest in selling or anything, but it's a very promising area and I, I like what you're doing. I pay the taxes on my little lot, I keep my little lot up, you know? So it was my grandmother's place, but it's, it's, it's a promising area and I know it's going to be some great things that happen there. So if it's in it, I'm speaking on his behalf. Give him a chance.
All right, thank you.
Give him a chance. Because we, we, we don't have too many young black men in that area that's trying to do what this young man is trying to do. I just didn't know how this concerned me, but I, I thank you for telling me.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Harris, we appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience at this time who'd like to come speak either for or against the petition? We're going to close public comment at this time and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
It's actually a very, very nice prop-, property. Done a very good job redoing it. It's owner-occupied, I see no issue. I do, do see the parking is there, but I still, three bedrooms, have a little concern with eight people, but I do agree with the staff's recommendation.
I agree as well with the staff recommendation of six adults, three vehicles. I think it's your first year, see how it goes on the probation and then if no issues, then maybe revisit this when we come back, so I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I agree in this probationary year to, to follow staff's recommendation. I agree with my fellow board members. You have a, a good bit of parking and I, I see that and we've seen many other homes over, since the STR, the ordinance has been in effect, it may have had ample parking, but it didn't correlate with the size of the home and the bedrooms and it can get flipped the other way. When you don't have adequate parking, you could have an extremely large home, but if it was only allowing two cars that could be stacked on a single-lane drive, that would preclude filling up all those other bedrooms. That's just kind of how it shakes out. I think we need to give it a shot in the first year with six adults, three vehicles parked off-street, thirty nights for one year. And the house looks great, you did a great job.
I agree with other family, other board members. We're following staff's recommendation of the six adults and three vehicles for the first year and then once we come back for the renewal, at that point in time, if there's no issues, we can look at increasing. And for clarity, that is six adults, so if it's children.
And for clarity, that is six adults, so if it's children coming, that doesn't count towards our adult.
I have to say, the house is absolutely fabulous. What a change. I mean, I think that certainly, and you said it's, it has also made your neighbors want to improve their homes too. It's a great thing. And I applaud you for trying to short-term rental this. I think that's going to be a good, hopefully it'll be a good experience for you. I also agree with staff recommendations, six adults and three vehicles. And hopefully you'll be back next year and see if we can increase that.
Okay, if there are no other board comments, we will mo, move to a reading of the petition and vote. Matter of ZBA-94-23, Gregory Benyon, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3249 Short 17th Street, Zoned R3 in Council District 1. Subject to the following conditions, a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights in a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Petition passed.
Okay, we'll move on to our next case, ZBA 9523, Reggie Brown, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1625th Avenue, Zoned R3, Council District 2. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. This is also over in the Forest Lake area. Then a closer aerial view. There are a couple nearby short-term rentals over in, um, Houndstooth is what is just northwest of this. View from the street. Tisher lives locally and will be the primary contact in case of emergency. He will be available 24/7. Tisher was a residential property manager for three years with Pritchett Moore. Security measures include a doorbell camera and keypad locks. The home is not owner occupied and will be used for long-term rentals outside of the times it is being rented short-term. The house is three bedrooms and three bathrooms. Tisher is requesting six adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
Was the driveway the only way in, access?
Yes. So with this, we did receive a comment that was concerned about the parking. It wasn't in support or opposition, just worried about the parking.
But I, the parking is just up to the wooden fence?
Yes. There is an alley in the back and I can let the petitioner touch on that. It seems as if that is not something that could be accessed for parking, but I'll let them confirm. It appears that there's only the parking in the front of the property.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
I'm Reggie Brown, I own the property. My home address is 4742 Woodland Hills Drive, Tuscaloosa. There is additional parking. If you open that gate up, it will open up fully. There are carport back there with additional parking, two more vehicles. On the alley side, there are gates that we have, got a secured lock on it that can be opened for up to five more vehicles behind there, pulling them from the alley. So there are additional parking, so plenty of room for up to six or eight cars, but we only going to do three vehicles and six, uh, people. I have been in the rental business off and on for over 25 years. We've had properties in Virginia as well as, my son grew up in that house and we're going to use it. Some when he comes to visit. We've got grandchildren now, they're living in Huntsville, so we're going to use it for game day to offset, um, the expenses of the home because we completely remodeled. If you open that gate up, there are carport behind there that will handle two vehicles. And on the backside of the lot, there are gates that would open that we will give access to if we need more than three vehicles. And they're light. We've got a security camera on the back and one on the front to watch the property. And we've got a property, um, person that will be cutting the grass and we have on-staff people that does all of our repairs we've used for the years. They're not, they're subs, if you have any other questions.
Do you have any plans to improve your driveway?
Well, unless I need to make a, um, I could put additional gravel in there if need be. But we just left it for grass, to be honest with you.
Do you plan to leave the gate there? I mean, you know, right now it looks like this would be two cars stacked back to back.
Well, we can open that gate up and have additional parking back in there as well as, there are parking on the alleyway. We can get up to probably five vehicles. It goes the whole width of the lot, which is over 50 feet.
So you can access it, if you drove straight through there, you can hit the alleyway?
No, no. We could open it up if we wanted to go all the way through, if need be. But we were doing it for security. If you're staying there with your family and small children, to be able to lock a gate so you, your children wouldn't go out in the back if need be. But they would be a lock where they could open it and go in and out as well. So we could have additional parking back there as well. So we've got plenty of parking space on the alley, like some of the other properties in the neighborhood have. That I think BB and Bama Bed and Breakfast have some, where they access theirs off the alley as well for additional parking.
Ms. Hayes, would you pull up that aerial photo, please?
Yeah, you see, uh, there used to be a trailer there. That is all been cleared off and that is all for additional parking.
Oh, that structure's not there anymore?
That was a Wells Fargo trailer. If somebody decided they'd rather have, then let me keep it.
Now, I understand the, um, Mr. Brown, you referenced on the front.
I'm sorry, what, sir?
The front driveway of the front of the house?
Yes, sir.
Off of Fifth Avenue? The issue we have there with doing more than two cars is it's stacked parking.
Okay.
So that kind of is what's limiting. And I'm assuming with the staff's, Office of Engineers' report, that was their focus, not knowing.
That we had access on the backside as well.
Correct, he didn't have access and he wouldn't know. Now, again, um...
We have rules also.
Mr. Gardner's not here tonight, however, and you may have spoken to him, Ms. Hayes. The rear, even if it has a locked gate you referenced that could be open, what would be the requirement there? I noticed the neighbor to the north, um, above his property, obviously they've got several cars parked there on that parking pad.
So what the Office of the City Engineer has typically required is for it to be a paved parking area or some concrete down. We don't allow per the zoning code, any addition of gravel that hasn't previously been there, so it would have to be concrete in order to allow that or some sort of other pavers. We've seen that before where we allow for some pavers that allow for the grass to still grow through it, but you can park on it. So it has the appearance of being grassed without it being torn up by cars pulling over it.
If I note, this property coming this way, that's gravel. The one on the, if you're going toward the ceiling is asphalt or concrete driveway. But this property below us toward the floor is gravel parking.
And I can't speak to it, Ms. Hayes is better equipped. And I think you may have said it originally, if it was there in that capacity.
If the gravel was there prior to the enacting of the zoning ordinance in 1972, which restricted the gravel, then we would allow you to maintain it. But if there hasn't been gravel there, then it has to be some other, um, type of material that could be parked over, like a concrete.
Can be slag though, can you slag either?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, we've run into this on, on many occasions and actually in this area back towards Forest Lake, where it was a single-lane end and the petitioner was a new petition similar to yours. And they were basically trying to get to the backyard, but it hadn't been improved yet. It was still grass. So in essence, we would only allow similar to this too. Now, if they came back in a year, if this works great for you and you say, hey, I would like that other couple with the third bedroom, and you made the appropriate improvements in advance of the petition in the rear, that would give you something that would qualify.
Or could we put a parking pad in the front like they've done in other houses?
Well, she would have to speak to that.
You wouldn't be able to do it in the front of the house. It'd be where exactly that driveway is, you could improve that to allow it, but you couldn't widen it.
You cannot widen it?
You can't widen it, unfortunately.
Kind of several of the properties in there, they've done that they've widened the driveways?
Most likely, either they've had that there before or they did it without approval. We don't allow for front yard parking.
But, yeah, lim, they're trying to avoid parking lots. Front yard's becoming concrete.
I understand. What we're doing, we've already put rules that they can only park off-street. And I think you got copy of our rules, I don't know if we put that in there.
Well, um, in this scenario, um, with staff's recommendation was for two, um, I've, I'm in favor of moving with their recommendation based on what they knew when they looked at it. I would suggest if this works well and you come back when you do through the staff.
Want to make a correction on something I actually just said. Because this is Zoned R3, you could do front yard parking. So if you wanted to expand that to allow for more parking in the front, just slightly, you could. Just check with us.
Okay, if, if before the year's out, if we want to expand that driveway and make it wider, can we do that before next year?
Yes, so you could do that. You just need to check to make sure it's not going to be more than 40% of your front yard, but we can work together on that.
Okay.
Yeah, call the staff and check before you spend any money or energy. But what we are going to vote on tonight.
Okay.
If it's agreed upon, is going to be per city staff's recommendation, which what we're allowing is only four adults.
I understand.
And two right now.
That's fine. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any question, further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do not have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Would anyone who's remaining like to come forward? No? We will close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Ms. Gillyam.
I mean, there's other short-term rentals in the area. Um, I'm in favor of the staff recommendation of four or two.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with my fellow board members. Per staff recommendation, I would just, um, reiterate, Mr. Brown, if this works, please get with staff prior to doing anything and they can help you with that. I'm in favor of approving.
I agree in favor as well.
I agree with staff recommendations.
With no further board comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and vote. The matter of ZBA-95-23, Reggie Brown, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1625th Avenue, Zoned R3 in Council District 2. Subject to the following conditions, a maximum of four adults, a maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights in a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to our last two cases, ZBA 9623, Annabelle Reagan, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2810 Prince Circle, Zoned R2, Council District 7. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. Closer aerial view of that property. There are not any nearby short-term rentals? Well, just kidding and take that back, just to the northeast, there is one that's hiding in the top of this picture. Uh, but that is the only one that is within that radius. Here is a view of the house. Annabelle Reagan and Craig Comstock will be the primary contacts in case of emergency. They live locally and will be available 24/7. Tishers are currently managing a rental in another house that they own and they haven't had any issues with that. Tishers state they plan to install a ring doorbell, keypad locks and motion sensor lights. The house is not owner occupied and per petitioner, the home will be used to practice interior design and landscaping skills with the occasional use by family. The house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. They are requesting five to six adults and two to three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff? We received one written comment in opposition.
Hello, my name's Annabelle Reagan. I live at 302 Queen City Avenue, Tuscaloosa.
If you could, tell us a little bit about your plan?
Yes, um, so we, right now, we are, well, I guess they just ended actually in July. We've been having tenants at our house on Paul Bryant. And so our plan really is to just kind of, it's not really even rehab, it's more so just paint and kind of just get it ready and have it used just for some of the game days. Both of our families are from Texas, so when they come down here, we would use it for that. And if friends come and there's too many friends, they might stay, but, um, yeah, that's really pretty much it. After I've heard everything y'all said, two vehicles does make sense with how much space we have. We're looking at getting that redone, but it probably wouldn't be till next year when we would come and try that. So, two vehicles makes sense.
Yeah, similar to the previous case.
Yes.
Stacking.
Yeah, I didn't even really think of it, but that makes sense that it would be way too much to have three, so two works good for us.
And I may have missed it in the previous screen or two. You will be the primary point of contact if there's an issue?
Yes, and we just live right on Queen City, so we're like six, seven minutes away. And we were just talking about it, if we have someone renting the house, we most likely will not be going out of town for that time period. If for whatever reason we did, we do have Tammy, one of our friends, Tammy West, um, has agreed to be able to help, but I don't really see that being a situation.
Down the road, I didn't, I didn't hear clearly when you said about next year, if you, this is successful, if you're approved.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you had three bedrooms. If you look to do something, what was mentioned in the previous case, please get with city staff because the zoning...
Yeah, absolutely.
The zoning is different than that. And that could limit you from doing anything else additionally in the front yard.
Okay.
Just please check.
Yeah, it has a massive backyard, so I'm thinking we'll do some sort of entrance back there, but I'll, I'll make sure to get with y'all. And that'll be a long way down the road, we have to paint and furniture, so I'll make sure to let y'all know.
Okay, um, any other questions for Ms. Reagan?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. Last opportunity. We do not have anyone, so we will close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I see no issue with the short-term rental with the staff recommendation.
No, I, I'm in agreement. I think that, um, I'm curious about the interior design and lawn care. You can come practice at my house.
Yeah, I was like, he's like, kids won't be practicing at our house anymore. So I'm like, well, just hop on there.
I thought that was, I thought that was unique, so yeah, I'm in, in favor.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. I think this is a good fit and I'm in favor of, um, staff recommendations, four adults and two vehicles parked off-street.
I agree with my other board members, I'm in favor.
I like the landscaping part, um, but I am also in favor of four adults and two vehicles.
There are no other comments from the board, we'll move to a reading of the petition and vote. The matter of ZBA-96-23, Annabelle Reagan, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2810 Prince Circle, Zoned R2 in Council District 7. Subject to the following, um, conditions, a maximum of four adults, a maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights in a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Petition passed.
Okay, our last case of the night, ZBA 9723, Scott and Janice Smith, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of the property located at 2312 Antietam Avenue, Zoned R1, Council District 3. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. Some nearby short-term rentals. Here's a view of the house from the street. And then that driveway. Tishers will be the primary contacts in case of emergency. They will be available 24/7. Tishers have operated short-term rental from this house and have not had any issues like a previous case. Their license unfortunately lapsed, so that is why they are back. Security measures include keypad locks. Tishers also state that they are in close communication with neighbors and plan to drive by the house while it is being rented to ensure that the tenants are complying with rules. The home is owner occupied and while the home is being rented, the petitioners will stay with family. House has four bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. And the property was previously approved, as I mentioned, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty for eight adults, four vehicles. That is what the petitioners are requesting for and that is what staff recommends, eight adults, four vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
We did receive a, a email in opposition.
We received two comments in opposition, but from the way that they read, it doesn't seem as if they were aware that there was a short-term rental here in the past.
But there are no complaints.
There have not been any complaints.
Did theirs expire or something?
They, their business license lapsed, unfortunately. They didn't renew for a year, so they have to come back.
That's all?
That's it. Thank you.
I'm Scott Smith. My wife couldn't be here. Her name's Jana Smith. And, uh, we, we have rented the house for, for a number of years and she had got to the point where she was not wanting to do it anymore. So that's why we let the license lapse and didn't get it renewed on time. But she has since changed her mind, so we were gonna go ahead. I think our three years was gonna be up anyway, so we were gonna have to come back and do this, uh, you know, next year, I guess, regardless. Um, so we're just trying to get our license back up. We've actually been in talks with, uh, Kim Roberts at Bama Bed and Breakfast and we're probably gonna have her let, um, you know, I guess, get in their rental program and let her also assist us in, in renting the property. But again, like everybody else, we're just trying to get a few games, uh, this fall, which is all we've ever done. And then typically the spring, uh, the May graduation, we'd usually have people that stay. And, um, and yeah, I mean, we're, we know all our neighbors and no one has ever opened. We, we let everybody know, obviously, we were doing this. Even before we had to have licenses and stuff, we did it and they were all aware and we've never had any issues. But we have had newer neighbors move in, so there could be someone that's seen the sign and just had no idea we had done it in the past.
How was your experience? Was it positive previously?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We've never had a single problem. Um, so, you know, and we, so we don't really have any concerns with that. And, uh, and like I said, our neighbors have all known if they saw anything or felt uncomfortable with anything, to give us a call. We're usually just staying around here with my parents or my brother and, uh, and we, you know, we've had guests ask us about things. We've run over and checked on them and handled them for them. So it's, yeah, it's just never been a problem. My wife just was getting fatigued with us having to, you know, get everything cleaned up and, you know, it's a lot of work to do it too, so.
Ms. Hayes, will you pull up the aerial, please? Yeah, I've, um, I approved this your initial.
Yes.
Uh, and probably the three-year renewal initially. Um, and I got a letter, cause I live within five hundred feet. Other than doing, sitting here, I would have never known rented. I'm across the creek and down two lots in Riverwood. So I back up to the same creek.
Gotcha.
And I know there are others in your neighborhood we've approved. Never once have I heard a noise or even thought twice about it, so your tenants have behaved. You probably heard more noise coming from my house. But, uh, no, I think that's, sounds very, very reasonable to ask. It's just basically the lapse of that license. I think that's very fair. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? No? Okay. Uh, we'll close for public comment and move to board discussion.
I see no issues. Had been successful in the past without any complaints, so I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. I group my fellow board member.
Yeah, I'm in favor. I think the petitioner spoke, um, of a good experience. And again, as sitting up here with my fellow board members, we see quite a few of these. The ones I know in the area, um, I've talked to the petitioners after the fact, run into them. They've had nothing but good experiences, so, um, just from a homeowner's standpoint, it can be a good thing in most cases. I'm in favor.
I agree, I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor. I really like where it is at the end of the cul-de-sac. You have a lot of privacy and I'm definitely in favor.
Okay, if there's no further board comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and vote. In the matter of ZBA dash ninety-seven dash twenty-three, Scott and Jana Smith, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at twenty-three twelve Antietam Avenue, zoned R one in Council District Three, subject to the following conditions. A maximum of eight adults, a maximum of four vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights in a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Uh, the petition passed. Okay, we have no further business. The meeting is adjourned.